Welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. As usual, we're gonna start with a prayer, pledge of allegiance. All right, go on.
Our end, please. Mrs. Emane, Father, we thank you for this day and we ask you to watch over our decision-making and our committees here in our council. And we ask you to watch over our residents and our workers in this community. Just guide them and direct them each and every day to make this a better place to live. We ask you to watch over those who have lost loved ones here recently and just guide them and direct them in their healing of their loss. I thank you for all that you do for us, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your beloved for which it stands, what a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Well call.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Richway?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
You have the August 19 regular council meeting minutes in your packets. Are there any collections or additions?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
You have a call?
Richway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. You have the approved draft list in your packet? Are there any questions?
I have a couple there. Kent, what, for all the Gurkin paving projects, I witnessed them, I seen what they did. What did Luftin paving do?
Luftin did the state route, patching, paving there on 49 and North Main.
Okay.
And roadway did funnel.
You said roadway did funnel. Okay. I thought Gurkin did funnel. Gurkin did do?
Gurkin did rock.
Okay, but they have it in here that Gurkin Materials did funnel, street, paving, state route, patching.
Those were materials.
Yeah, that included all the materials for rock and all the others. I bought all the asphalt except for all of those jobs.
Okay. Penness Mechanical for pool leak check, did we figure out where that's leaking?
Yes.
Yes, where is the leaking? Is it easy to describe?
In the ground.
On them pipes, huh?
No. It's where the ladders go down up against the wall of the pool. And they got little rubber tips on them and we never replaced them, never knew they were there.
So they wore through the liner?
And then there was a small leak down in the drain. So we can guide them, rubber tips.
So we got her fixed for $270?
No, 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 no.
We just found out what to fix?
That's a different company.
I don't know what that was.
I don't think we got a bill yet, I don't know.
No, that's a different company. They were just here on Labor Day weekend to find the leak.
This is Penness Mechanical.
There was $900 and something.
That would've been, Penney's, wouldn't it? They probably had something back there, filter area, or they says?
Oh, that was, yeah.
Pool leak.
That was, they checked out the pit, the other, you know, one of the guys who put in all the filters, three of the filters.
Making sure the leak wasn't coming from there, so they were checking to verify.
That was $270.
So we did get it fixed for?
We haven't got the bill yet for that. They were just here.
It was $900 and something.
The Fixa?
That's still reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Val. Republic Services at the sewer plant for a $10,000 dumpster?
That was seven or eight at least.
What'd we haul out?
Sludge.
I thought we had a sludge hauler.
Uh-uh.
No?
No, we've done this for years. They load into a dumpster and hauls to Williams County landfill.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully, we'll have a couple more of those before the season's out.
Are you emptying those bladders? Or you haven't got to?
Not the sausages, no.
And the last one, Underground Utility Service, you had indicated that that was on stop?
He was done August 30th, or whatever last Friday.
This is the final. You should've put that on there, Cheryl, and made everybody feel good.
It's the final bill.
But I'm gonna rain on your parade. We're gonna have to buy two meters, because we've been talking to the EPA. They still want number three and six meter. And the ones we have aren't gonna work for us to read manually. So Jeff's checking into some prices.
Okay.
But we're gonna be able to read and monitor them, give them the information, and not have to pay it outside for them.
Right, right.
They won't be cheap.
Well, I don't know, it shouldn't take as long to pay for them. Ooh, that'd be?
We'll see, but yeah.
With that, I have no further questions, and if anybody else does, pay the bills.
I'll second that.
You'll call?
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
I'm saying.
Jones?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Yeah, Susie Mack? Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't get these here for your packet. And this map should make me share. I don't know that I have one. I'm here on behalf of the beautification committee. First of all, I'd like to thank you very much for your support during this past year.
Who's that one now?
This last year, we were getting close to the end of that. And also, just to update you on two things. Most of this is just general information, but looking under, I think, a couple new things. First of all, with Farmers Market, Kelsey Clepper has been in charge of that this year, and she's really tried to add new vendors and has been sort of successful, but not as successful as she'd like to be. So she's going to continue to work on that for the coming year. But I think the vendors have been happy with the, they like the location, they get pretty good people coming. That works pretty well, a lot better than in the past. And it's just something we keep working on. We just like to have more, if you have more vendors, you have more buyers, and if you have more buyers, you have more vendors. It's sort of efficiency. But we keep working on that. Under challenges and opportunities, the main thing I'd like to talk about is the, what used to be the rain garden, the corner of Main and Arthur. And that is the village lot, and the beautification committee really doesn't have, we don't really know what our charge is related to that lot. And we didn't do well on the rain garden for several reasons. First of all, that wasn't an ideal spot for a rain garden. And then, secondly, just taking care of that just developed to be way more than we were in a position to do. It had too many grasses in it. Unfortunately, Stephanie Singer, who was the soil and water person that worked with you in putting that in, she left like a year and a half ago from soil and water. So she never did, she was supposed to do a maintenance calendar for us, and that never happened, and it just was not a good thing. And we apologize for that. But we keep looking at that lot and thinking that there needs to be something done there. And so we contacted Court Gosia, who's the Bryan City Parks landscaping person. And he came over, we were hoping he was gonna come and make. Excuse me, or June, he ended up coming a week. And the drawing that I passed around is basically what he calls a concept plan. It's not, it's not a final plan by any means, but he came over and talked to us about what we thought about that lot and what we'd like to see there. And then he developed this plan. And part of the impetus for doing this is that we had applied for a defiance area foundation grant in the spring and asked for, they were doing these $1,000 grants in honor of their, what was it, their 50th? I can't remember what anniversary it was, 40th, I think. But they did $1,000 grant, so we asked for a $1,000 grant for one large tree, because we thought that would make a big difference on this lot. Now, when Court came to look, he basically recommended that we do four smaller trees, because he said in 10 years, they both end up being the same size, and you get more bang for your buck by doing smaller trees. And so Bruce Clevenger from the extension office is coming on Thursday to talk to us about what kind of trees he thinks would work in that lot. And I talked to Kent last week, and he was going to call for a map of where all the utilities were on that lot, so that we didn't get into a problem with where trees would go. And we're knowing that this is your lot, so we're not gonna do anything without your approval. But we wanted you to know where we were in the process. I think the main thing that Court emphasized to us when he came was that there's no way the volunteers can take care of a lot that size. There's just, you have to have paid people involved. And that was our, that probably was part of our problem related to taking care of the rain garden. But, you know, it needs to, and I don't know how this would happen, because he said basically, what I think people look at is Bryan, that little garden that's on the corner of Center, and is that Portland?
Yeah. Yeah.
And actually, that little garden, that lot, is bigger than the Main and Arthur lot, which is, you know, I think of that as being sort of tiny, but he had a, he showed the difference between the two. And, but he said for that, he's got like two or three guys that work on that during the summer, probably an average of 10 hours a week. Plus, he has other guys that do the mowing. So, you know, you take care of the mowing now, but we need to figure out, you know, he said you can, you need, first of all, somebody to be in charge that would help with the fundraising, because it would take significant money. And we always looked at this as sort of a step-by-step, that there would be a master plan, so that people didn't just pop trees in there or stick a branch in there without a big plan that, you know, so that everything ended up being in the right place. And that's what we're trying to do with this or something similar. So that's sort of where we are. I mean, we're not gonna do, we're gonna pay Court for his coming over and doing this part. And ideally, if you give us approval, we'll put some trees in there this fall, but we'll come back to you with what the recommendation is and where we're recommending that they go. Kent, have they come and done that? Have they looked at that lot yet?
It should've got marked since the end of last week.
Okay.
I didn't go by there today to see if there's flags or anything, but.
Kent?
They should've been there.
Okay. So they don't give you a map, they just mark the locations?
Yeah, they should have some flag, like yellow for gas.
Okay.
What SMTA uses, or you guys might just mark orange for property. I didn't get over that way at all today.
Right, and I've been out of town, and I didn't either, so I didn't throw them a nap.
I think what you do now, Susan, throughout the community is wonderful. I mean, the different corners and the gardens and the park and your whole community does a great job.
Yeah. It's a great, it is a great community.
The downtown flowers, it's very nice.
Works all together.
And I see, you know, I like this concept, but I don't know if we have the manpower, even the city have the manpower. They're spending $10 a week on their garden if we keep growing this. It's hard to start the project and then have to stop it because we don't have the time or that can't come up with the money. I know there's a vision and everything. I like how you're doing it in steps. But I think if you even start out maybe enhancing with some trees and some mulch and doing something like the park garden we have, so it's not so.
Right, and that's.
Labor intensive.
You approved that, and Kent, as soon as we get stuff out of there, we've talked, he's gonna move big rocks for us, and then that's all gonna be dug out. And part of the flowers were, I think we'll move to the land office, which really doesn't have anything to do with council. And the hedges that live on the corner of Chicago and High Street, they have a rain garden in their backyard, so they're gonna take some of the starts to add to what they have.
I think it would take a commitment from.
Ideally, with the amount.
Right, as it grows and gets more enhanced throughout the different gardens, I mean, you have quite a few gardens in there, too. I mean, planting trees and, you know, that's not a lot of maintenance and, you know, mowing it properly and things like that, I don't like those, those and stuff, but we've got that park a lot of time there, but making sure that we can maintain it down the road as things progress.
Yeah, and I think at some time, we just need, I mean, right now, there's a beautification employee that you pay for, but she's a worker bee, she's not an organizer, but it may come a time to look at that position and try and enhance it some, to take care of all the, you know, looking at all the beds we have in town. And I, you know, I would talk to Rotary about getting involved in this, but Rotary's sort of waiting to hear about the Rotary Pavilion, so until we know what's going on there, I don't wanna pass them too many, too many projects.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Nope. Thanks for everything you've done, Susan.
Thanks, Susan. Sheila and Diana on our committee, and we take the door down.
I'd like to just say thanks to the First Church of Christ also for allowing Farmers Market to take place there on their property. It is a great location, people, Father.
Going on, Woods and Commissions. The Park Board met August 21st, the minutes are in the packet. Are there any questions? Or Val's here, we can ask her questions, if you have any.
Well, before Val speaks, I know on the Little League Association that came and asked for a waiver on their fees. I really didn't know in the past that they had been charged fees, and I talked to Cheryl and then got information from Val again, or Val and Gary. But everyone who uses the park outside of the city, kinda like the school saves a fee for the use of the fields and the softball association in Little League, and they paid these fees for many, many years. It's the usage of the fields, and we take care of the mowing and the maintenance and help with some of the dirt, and we've put in some money back into those fields over the years. And I know the associations also have put in some of the money that they have raised back into those areas where they play. But they're asking to be waived of all fees. I wanna make sure what they were asking for completely, and I know Val talked to Greg today. They want all fees waived. And it runs about, I think, but the lights, the electricity for the fields, the, what we charge for is around $800, I think, I believe, that's on right, Cheryl, from the contract. And they have an All-Star tournament, and there's a fee on that, too. But you can see how the board.
Can I interrupt you, please? Kent shaking his head, so if I get a hand, I wanna know what he's shaking it about. Well, I guess I would be honest, a lot of the stuff they've done down there, the village didn't ask them to do, they took it upon themselves to do. And Park doesn't have enough money now, you're gonna eat some income for the next 10 years.
Right. I'm bringing it to council, I'd like to have a motion on it. I'll make the first motion to ask for their waive of fees that they're asking for. You know, they do try, not giving them, I'm not saying that what they're doing is bad for the field, they do put money back in the fields, but I think it's fair. We have a fee for usage of the parks.
Yes.
For different organizations, so, but I told Val and Gary to bring it to council tonight and vote on if we're willing to waive those fees that they're asking for.
What do you think, Val?
We've always charged, and if we don't, we give it to them, we gotta offer it to the girls. The school, they pay. It only seems fair that.
Plus, I think you've had some issues develop from some of their volunteer, remember our $8,000 fence last year?
Mm-hmm.
And I think you've had some other field-related expenses that. You guys can vote how you want.
Some of the tax dollars do go into the fields at times, you know. We give budget for some more dirt or resurfacing the fields and hire people to come in and do that. You know, it's not like we don't do anything for the little fields as a city. But I'm just saying, put this on the table, we do appreciate what they do to enhance the fields, they put in dugouts. The girls have put in dugouts. They've tried to better the fields through, you know, that.
But it wasn't, wasn't a necessity. We handed those.
It's a need, it's a want, right.
Yeah, the dugouts get pretty trashy.
But they're building new ones and they spent some money, but I wanna make sure that.
They donate an awful lot of time.
They do, they work hard. And, but we need to make a motion to waive the fees for the Little League Association as asked, asked by the Park Board.
I'd be specific about the fees, because it sounds like there's more than, one, there's a fee to use, there's electricity or something evidently, I mean.
There's a lighting contract and then.
There's a light.
The use contract.
And they have to pay for their keys, because they usually don't return them. Listen.
There's a contract that they fill out beginning of the year in those fees.
I'm just saying, you know, be specific in case it does get approved, and then somebody thinks it covers something, and somebody thinks it doesn't.
Yes.
And then that's the argument next May or whatever.
And that's what I was confused on this morning a little bit, if it was just for a certain amount of fees and/or all the fees, and Val talked to Greg, and he had sent her back a message it was for all fees.
Do we have a total that we're talking about here for waiving the fees?
$800 a year.
Plus the girls, because we fill out a vacant if the girls are.
So 800 isn't the total.
So it'd be $1,600 a year, is that correct, Val?
No.
The girls don't have lighting contract.
Yeah, the Little League pays for lights. You see the lights.
Then the girls don't have an All-Star tournament either.
Can you give me a ballpark of what the cost would be?
About $800.
For the, for the boys, but what about the girls, though? Well, what's the girls', because the lighting contracts?
Girls is $300.
$300 for them, so $1,100 bucks a year.
So we're trading $16,000 worth of work, plus all their time, for $1,100 bucks?
Times 10 years.
Times 10 years?
$11,000. Plus what anything else they do over the next 10 years that they put into it.
Did you make your motion?
I think, I like the idea of waiving the fee, but I do think we should keep in there the fee for the keys, just to make them accountable for their keys, so Gary and I aren't having luxury keyed and.
Have we ever done, have we done this a lot?
We've always charged for as long as.
No, have we waived it a lot? Have they ever asked, have they ever come?
Nobody's ever asked before. As long as I asked Val that question, Gary today, I said, who have we asked the Park Board to waive fees? This is a first. Different people come on the committees and over time make them, you know.
They had that park hum in the summer.
It's usually run for electric through the summer.
No, not off the top of my head.
Is that in the 800 or over and above the 800?
For the year, probably.
The 800 is part of the fee, that'd be, well, I think the $350, I think, is what the lighting contract is, and that kinda covers the lighting.
Got it.
And some lighting repairs.
I know, I'll be the bad guy on, I guess I don't care. But do you have issues with them, like leaving lights on and things like that anymore? Okay, well, that's fine. I mean, that's fine.
But they only use them for two months out of the year, it took a while.
Is the.
But then you guys are talking about replacing the lights, too.
They're kicking it around, or trying to, yeah, see what we have to do with lights, and that's gonna be a major expense.
Yeah.
If we're gonna do it.
Are they gonna stop charging?
They have to wait for 10 years.
Will they still be charging?
They charge kids to play ball, so they gotta waive their fees?
That's on the, that's.
But will that be passed down to the kids not having to pay to play?
Why's it have to be 10 years? Why can't we go back to five and then see how it works? I don't like that 10-year.
That's a long time.
And then can we override what they just voted to do?
Yeah, it's your decision.
That's why it's coming, that's why it's coming here, that's why I told them I'd make the motion. They voted on their end of what they thought was best for the, all the associations.
We agreed 10 years, a lot can happen. Okay, let's do it, five years. They pay for keys every year. Anything else, Val?
We got downward, they only need three keys now, so.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Can we give them the, you know what to write.
I made a motion already.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nobody seconded, so it can be dropped. Nobody seconded that motion, so it can change a motion. Mine was for what they've asked for from the Park Board. That was the 10-year commitment, total waive of fees. So nobody's. Can I rescind my motion?
I'd like to second yours. I'd like to second your motion, 10 years.
You'll call?
Baker?
No.
Barth?
No.
Jones?
No.
Richway?
No.
Beverly?
Nope.
Bassett?
Yes.
That makes you feel like a Lone Ranger, don't it?
Almost feel like you. Yeah, I was on Park Board for a long time, I know the amount of hours and time they put in and for the amount of money they put in all the dugouts and the field work and everything.
And I agree with everything you're saying, but I also agree with Ron, 10 years, and we all know 10 years is a long time. It's a long time.
It's a lot to ask for.
Well, now, I would make the motion.
Could I ask Val and Gary if they're, because they work down there, they work, they spend the time on the fields and, are you okay with, you know?
What do you, what do you, okay?
We didn't okay anything, we just voted down what they asked for for 10 years.
Oh.
Ron's new motion is five a year, but they still have to pay for their keys, but no field rental. And no lights, right? We're gonna, no lights and.
So that'd be no field rental for the boys, the girls, and no lights for the boys.
Right. And they have to pay for the keys.
So that means the kids don't have to pay to play ball, then?
That's not your decision, Val.
So then are they gonna, what if they just, you know, so you're, are you doing this because they work so, because they spend so much money at the park? Are you doing this because they spend so much money at the park? What if they stop?
Well, they already put $16,000 in, just in dugouts.
I mean, I can't imagine that they would not do anymore or continue what they're doing, but.
But that does happen, I know.
We have a very dedicated group of volunteers down there for them kids.
And I know they work hard, they put on a lot of time, they work on the fields, they work on the fields sometimes when, you know, Val, Gary.
When I'm working on the field.
And they help, and they do work on the fields when they need help.
That only happened once.
You know. But, but in all fairness, though, to, you know, we spend, how much time you guys got in mowing and, you know, if it rains, then you gotta spend extra time. We spend a lot of extra time down there paying our city employees down there to enhance the field when it's raining and everything else, so.
They probably had with them, it's communication, you know, and they're trying to work better with that.
Yeah, but there's no ordinance, resolution, there's nothing that we as council can pass that can change that. I mean, you know.
Sometimes they do things about asking, they do a curse, and then pass like. Sometimes they do things about asking, they do a curse, and then ask later. That happens sometimes.
What do you do when that happens, when they do something and ask later?
Well, we talk about it and nothing ever got stopped, we ask them to come to our meeting.
I asked Troy to draft up a letter to send to all the associations that use the, everybody, the school, the Little League, the softball, in regards to that, and he's been working on that.
I got drafted it.
You know, to address, you know, you can't just do anything you want, it's a, you know, city park and everything, you have to have the guidance of your park directors if and when you wanna work on anything, and through their guidance you can do stuff. You can't do it just to do it.
Did you just say you had him draft a letter already?
Yeah.
Been talking about it for the last week or so.
Season's over, we're new for next year.
Mike, while we're mentioning that, so we also talked about the issue of background checks.
Oh, true.
Yeah. Farther than that, possibly.
Right.
And all the little kids?
Well, we talked, yeah, I think all coaches should have background checks. I mean, are they gonna be wise?
And they do it, most places that I'm aware of, they do have a system, I mean, I coached over in Defiance and you gotta complete a thing and they send it in and check, and if you don't pass, you can't coach.
Is it because of you that they started that?
Yeah, that's why. Would you?
Yeah. I still don't think we should let $1,100 a year run the risk of upsetting all these guys that volunteer and go, "Hey, you know, if you can't do that for us and for the kids, take care of it yourself."
The park doesn't run itself, I mean, we don't make enough money in the park.
Right.
From their little, you know, $800 a year to pay for Gary and Val's salary, the pool does not make us money.
Exactly.
Doesn't matter if there's 100 kids in there a day, we'd still lose money. They have to mow the grass, whether there's ballgames or not, you guys still mowing the fields? Are there any ballgames there? You guys still have to mow the area?
That's all legal.
On one field, but how many fields are there? You gotta mow them all no matter what, don't you? So, to me, the property's there, you gotta mow it, you gotta maintain it, it's not sustainable, we don't make enough money on family passes and interest in the park for, I mean, we're not charging an arm and a leg. To me, for the amount of money they put in, I bet on the park board, if they would've budgeted and said that they wanna spend $10,000 on the dugouts and then, and we say, "Okay, yeah, do that this year." Next year, they say, "Hey, we want another $10,000, do the other dugouts." We okay that, we're saving money this way compared to the other way, because you guys paid for a third of the softball diamond, the athletic boosters paid for a third, and that was $8,000 or $6,000 each, and whatever the park board asked for, you guys either say yes or no, but they're not sustainable, they don't make enough money to generate, to run the park by any means.
Val, did you say that you've asked the baseball association to come to the park board meetings and they are not coming?
Well, they were supposed to come in August, and I don't know why they didn't show up.
Just one time, they were asked to come?
Yeah, it was after, yeah, I asked them to come.
But Greg came to our last meeting and spoke. Like I said, they do spend a lot of time on that.
Who needs to tell me how to concession stand? That we're painting their electric? I don't understand this one. What part don't you understand, young man?
What he just said.
Well, I don't know, I think you're taking away any kind of responsibility, they have to take care of our stuff. You're not paying anything. You can also state in the, in the motion that we will drop these charges, providing that things continue with the volunteerism that there is. The day that the HHBA or whatever it is stops doing the things they're doing, we start charging again. Well, no, you guys do what you want, that much extra money you got to give them. Everything shut me down, I'm gonna try to make a motion. The school gotta come, well, five years will hold on their toes. I wouldn't blame them.
It'll change, it changes every year, doesn't it?
I wanna make a motion that we suspend the rental fees for the boys and the girls and for a five-year term. They pay for all their keys yearly. Anything else we wanna add in that? And if they, and if they fail to continue the superior volunteerism that has been shown, we will go back into contract negotiations.
And as for all, those, girls and boys?
Girls and boys.
For five years.
For five years.
Okay, I'll second that.
Includes the light contract.
Excuse me?
It includes the light contract.
Which is 350. Yeah, which includes the light.
I'll second that motion.
Local?
Baker?
No.
Dang.
Barth?
No. Yes.
Richway?
No.
Beverly?
Do you get your difference now? Yes? Your 33.
Well, there, I'm a half hour of my life shot, I hope.
Nice try.
So, not one.
Yeah, not one.
They pay, they pay.
Business as usual.
I hope you don't kill the volunteerism down there, kids.
You know what, nobody asked them to do it before, you know, they just did it on their own, and I don't think this stipulation is doing this.
Well, that's like refusing to tell your neighbor, "Hey, nice job painting your house." I mean, he did it because he wanted to better himself, they're doing it because they want it better for them.
Well, it's no different than me coming to rough your house and just do it out of the kindness of my heart, I wouldn't be asking for money, you know?
It takes too much beer to have you rough a house, I've seen you do it.
Well, we appreciate all the hard work that the people do at the park, and there's no doubt about that, they do a great job.
And they can't, they can't ask for, I tell people, you have to ask for things to get an answer, you might not like the answer, but you gotta bring it to the table, or we don't mind. I think, you know, if we can't help in all the fields down there and the pavilion, they've got changes for the pavilion they'd like to see coming down the road, you know, the park in general, we do have to use taxpayers' dollars to help enhance it, and not saying we can't do that for the different associations and the other aspects of the park, so...
Thank you for bringing that up. Did we cover everything you wanted to discuss?
I do believe.
Okay. We'll go on to the beautification committee, the minutes were brought in when Susan came tonight for your packet, just to update you on what they're working on. We'll go on to the council, are there any boards or commissions or any others? Okay. Council committee reports, the ordinance committee met August 26th. The minutes are in the packet, it says?
Yeah.
Okay, I think I got my packet out of order. Oh, thank you.
There is there.
Are there any questions about that? Mine just got myself out of there. And then the insurance committee, minutes?
There's no minutes, but we met on the 26th, and there's, was an increase of 5.95% on the insurance, there's four tiers, there is five people that work for the village that not take the insurance and we pay them, was it 2,500 to not take the insurance, we're gonna increase that on all four tiers, $1,000, to see if we can't get some more to jump on their spouses' insurance. And that was about it, it was a short, sweet. And Ron Jones and Mike Barth is on that with me.
Do you need that in the form of a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we do the raise for $1,000 on each tier.
You know what, could you state what it is for each tier, does somebody know that?
What is 3,500, 2,500?
It's 2,000 for single, 2,500 for single with children, it's 3,000 for couple, and it's 3,500 for family.
Exactly.
And somebody might think that's a lot of money, but we pay a lot of money for medical insurance, and that would be a tremendous savings if they could take it with a spouse or choose another program.
I'll second Sheila's motion.
Local?
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Bassett?
Yes.
Thank you. It's good to have that discussed. Does the insurance committee have anything else?
Nope.
Okay. All right, are there any committees of council that have anything to report?
I'd like to meet sometime for the sidewalk committee, kinda go over, we've had, give people about three meetings now to come and talk about sidewalks and the increase, I'd like for us to get together and give our vote to council at the next one, so.
I've got a couple on my phone that I don't know how to get off to send to you people, so I'll show them to you in that meeting.
Okay, we'll schedule something after this.
Good. Thank you. Administrators report?
One thing and then I'm gonna turn to where the mic, get him out of the way. Mentioned last time our insurance is coming up, our renewal, the county had to come at the next meeting on the 16th. Why nothing changed?
What would you tell us?
I hate to have him drive down from our school to say hi and leave, but if that's what you want, I'll pass that on.
I don't think it's necessary.
I don't either.
Otherwise, I guess, had Mike come so he can fire away with sidewalk questions, seems like we kept having people not connecting, kinda communication, I think he just came.
Mike, would you go to the podium, please? Thank you.
Here goes your chance to get it all out.
This is a sidewalk list, that it looks like your list was started in 2017, comprised of 18 and 19. This is great, it shows the residents of houses that got notices and whether repairs are complete or not, and I see that you sent 40 letters out that were second notices. I guess we don't know when they got their first notice, but what did your second notice tell them, Mike?
That they had 30 days to repair it or the village would see that it was repaired in the space.
Okay.
Mike, I have a question for you?
Sure.
What's TC?
Two, two, two code, I didn't know what else to say. A lot of times, a lot of the letters that were sent out, there were cracks in the sidewalk and there were bunks, but they were not bad enough that needed to be replaced, so they're still to code, but they're, I've gotta keep my eye on them.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mike?
And you've stayed right on sending the letters, you're keeping right, following right through?
I and I are working together right now to start on, probably not this week, but next week, to get started on some spots that we can...
Start replacing.
Are the village's spots all done? Do we have any of our cells that aren't done?
I think we got them all last year.
Okay.
There may be a couple other ones, I don't think there's anything that has to be fixed.
Okay.
And you're gonna stay consistent with it, that, I think that's the biggest thing, is you stay consistent, they will stay consistent. You can't let it lay for six months or so, and I think that's what's happened.
We still have an issue with the tree sidewalks or whatever you wanna call them.
Yes.
I did send out some warnings for those and about everyone has called, oh, I thought you guys were gonna take the tree down.
And so, I was under that understanding, too, Mike, and what did nuisance decide, did they, did you guys take, didn't you take that to nuisance? The sidewalks and the trees?
No, I don't think we did, I think it, I knew Kent took a couple sidewalks down for people, or took a couple trees down for people that were gonna put in sidewalks, and do you have a list of them, Ken, that want trees down before sidewalks are done?
No, I'd have to go by whatever we got here, I'll have to put a bunch of money next year to budget.
I have to the four people that have called about it, and I said, "Well, we decided that we're just going to, you guys have to comply with what we've sent you, and we're not gonna take the trees down, you'll have a certain amount of money that we can do that with for a year anyways." Runs out fast.
Yeah.
I wish I was smarter. We're telling people to fix sidewalks that have raised from a tree, and they're saying they don't wanna fix them because the tree did it, and we're saying we're not gonna mess with the tree?
Right now, yes.
That's bull. If you come down to my house and tell me to fix, and I don't have a tree up front, but if I did and it had raised a sidewalk and you tell me to fix my sidewalk and it's gonna happen again in two years, but you're not gonna do anything about the tree, I'm not doing nothing.
I agree with you, Ron, but I don't know what else to say.
Yeah. I've seen places in town where the sidewalks have actually gone around the tree.
Yes.
And that's allowed?
I don't know how that ever got started, but it's been that way for a long time.
I start, well, I know, there's, one was a brand-new sidewalk that was put in for the school.
Yep.
They went around trees, so if a person has to replace a sidewalk and they don't have a problem going around a tree, I guess.
Normally, if we were going to replace it, we would cut the, we'd be in the street department, they would cut the routes out the best that they could and then they would replace them. Of course, how could they take the sidewalk?
I know, each tree is different, but...
Out of these 40 that are pending, how many you think are tree?
Probably seven.
Can I say something? Don't you think we oughta figure out what we're doing on the option, the A, B, and C, before we start working on putting sidewalks in? That's, I know we said that, but...
I told Mike to continue with these, what he's supposed to be doing until it's settled.
Uh-huh.
To just continue with what he started in 2017.
But I also think if 50 people are given a notice and they were all told to fix their sidewalks and some people paid for it and got it done right away and 40 other people didn't.
Yeah.
I think those people should still have to fix them at their own cost.
Well, I think we need to pick out what plan we're gonna do and just get started on that program.
That'd be a wonderful idea, Robert.
Yep.
Well, we had a plan.
Yeah, but we don't like your plan.
I know. Okay.
Well, I guess, though, we're still back to, I mean, it needs an answer, long-term, on the trees.
But I agree with Val, if your tree's causing a problem, it's gonna do it again and face it, I don't think that's right.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
I want a copy of this recording. You got some tree guys in here.
Well, no, so you want me to see if they can cut down seven trees real quick, even though I don't have any money left in the budget for that?
Well...
And then next year, you're looking at how many more?
Since, since the going around the tree was brought up, I don't see where that's, I, back when I was doing all the sidewalks 20 years ago, 25 years ago, we went around not a lot, but a few.
I had one.
We cut all the root structure out and then set out like three foot from this edge of the tree for our outside of the radius of the sidewalk, and they're all still holding pretty decent. And it's not a, it's not a, you know, you walk right up to the trunk and then you, real quick around, it's nice, gradual.
No, I don't care what you ultimately do, I just need to know now what you went done with these seven, 'cause you were saying you think it'd be dumb to do it with a tree there, so are we cutting them all down if...
Can we add some options, turn around it or cut it down?
Can we give the resident their option of... Can we get the resident their option?
Yeah.
I hate, I hate seeing cutting down a beautiful tree that they want in their front yard, you know, and it's, it's healthy and everything. Cut the whole thing down to, because of sidewalks going up against the side.
I'm with you 100%.
I do not, I love the trees in this town. I love the big ones. It's sad to see when.
I think I love them even more than Kent does.
Well, I'm sure you do.
I would be nice to give them an option on that.
Heck, yeah.
Then 10 years down the road, the root, the trunk are rotten.
And you have a crooked sidewalk.
With mine.
Are you gonna use skilled labor to put in sidewalks that you mandate to put in? Or we're gonna have a bunch of hodgepodge?
No, it won't be good work.
It will be good work.
So we, we have an answer for Mike? Is he going, I mean, we gotta allow the residents with the tree issue to pick?
Well, I guess, and maybe this should be discussed at the sidewalk committee, I don't know, but perhaps if someone is on the list that has a tree that has humped up their sidewalk and that tree needs removed, perhaps that one could be delayed until Kent can get it in his budget to cut down the tree.
And I'm gonna guarantee there's gonna be people saying, well, if it was your sidewalk doing it, then you should cut the tree down and fix the sidewalk because it was your tree.
Well, I don't think they've ever been aware that, that the, around the tree is an option. I'm like Mike, I would hate to see a 100-year-old beautiful maple tree dropped because the sidewalk runched up two foot or two inches.
Does that make sense for your committee?
Yep.
For the committee to discuss that when they're talking about sidewalks? Any other questions for Mike?
Yeah, Mike, every address, is every address in the town versus?
There are some of them that didn't get a notice, uh, some of them that most all of, everyone that I sent a notice to is on.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
Anybody else?
That's it.
Thanks for coming.
It's a nice list.
Thanks for the report.
Like your list, Jeff.
Liar.
Okay, anything else for the administrator's report? Any questions for the administrator? Okay. Then we'll go on to the solicitor's report.
Resolution 2019-08, second reading by caption only. Resolution for the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to rehire Troy Essex as village solicitor for the Village of Hicksville. Resolution 2019-12, a first reading by caption only. A resolution to assess streetlight millage. You need that right away.
I would like it so that she can get it in her budget in the county. And for everybody to notice that it's halved what it was last year for the last few years.
So people's taxes are gonna go down?
A little.
That's a positive. I move to suspend the rules. Second.
Roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
So second, third readings of resolution 2019-12 by caption only. A resolution to assess streetlight millage and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And then the last thing is Cheryl put in the packet the letter from the Budget Commission about the share of the local government fund. Cheryl can tell you, see, it's, it's a motion that needs to be made to accept it. You see, it's 6.9% estimated. It's a little over 78,000 and I'm not sure how that compares to last year. You know, Cheryl?
It is only a difference of less than $1,000.
Someone wanna make a motion to accept the local government fund estimate here?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Cheryl, then we have some other pending issues that I wanted on the solicitor's report. Did you have signatures of them?
We're waiting for Haynes Enterprises.
What's happening with Haynes?
Haynes. Um, it's, we just gotta get the final approved. I've talked to him, sent to him, so I need to follow up with him. I'll do that tomorrow and I'll send you an email. And I also, like Mike mentioned, I've been working with him on a couple of issues for the park as well as, Mike, the utility issue that you asked me about. I have, I sent that letter out and I'll send you a copy tomorrow. Email it to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is this that, that involves the entire council or?
No. Outside the city limits.
Cheryl, you have, seems like there were three things. I always saw you leave them on the agenda until you're finished up.
And this is the only one that I, is still there.
Did Jerry Hayes call you? Well, have you spoken to Jerry Hayes about Five Acre Mill?
He only mentioned it because when we were dealing at the last minute on the Schmitz CRA and I had to get him involved to do all that, when I called him, he thought that's why I was calling, because you had sent that email to him. And he thought, and so he briefly mentioned it, mentioned it and said that he needed to speak to him, but that's been, that was at our last meeting. So I have not spoken to him since then. Would you like me to give him a call?
I would like to have that cleaned up before I leave office.
Okay.
So Ron's not.
Sure. I will call him tomorrow and then whatever proposal he has as far as speaking to him or whatever, I'll make sure I pass the other info along to Cheryl. It'll be in there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
So we will go on to department heads. Police Department?
All I had was for the month of August. It took 417 calls for service. And 210 of those calls for service ended up being pieces.
Everybody healthy?
No.
On the department, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Meeting your staff.
It's right now, yeah.
How many offices is there total?
How many officers is there total? Right now, there's seven of us.
Seven. How many full-time?
Seven. There's seven full-time.
All full-time?
Yeah, we have four, four part-timers.
Any questions? Thank you for coming tonight. It's nice to see you.
There was 104 people complied with and made their repairs on their sidewalk. I think that's great.
That is great.
104.
I'm glad that you counted those. Good deal. Okay, we will go on to the fiscal officer's report.
Um, you have your fund status report, um, the August revolving loan report. You have a notice in there about the RCAP training that's available. And the OML Fall Conference is coming up. And so I put the agenda. If you're interested in going to any of that.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Cheryl?
Under Mayor's Report, remind residents to put garbage in bags, not directly in the tote. Last week, I happened to be following a garbage truck that when it lifted up its load, stuff just went flying out in the street. And, um, I thought, and then also a little bag flew out in the intersection up at, uh, Main and High, and I walked out in the intersection, picked, picked a garbage bag up and brought it back here, but, um, that wasn't a garbage. It was just a little grocery sack. So I'd just like to remind the residents that it would be helpful, and I think it was part of the requirement that they put their garbage in a bag and then in their tote. So that would help garbage from blowing all over town. And I actually talked to the driver on Spencerville Street when he was stopped picking up stuff that blew out. And I thanked him for going back and picking up the garbage that blew out. And he told me that people were supposed to be putting their stuff in this garbage bag inside the tote, but that wasn't happening very well. And so he was having to make a lot of stops to pick up garbage that was blowing out. So.
It might be too late. The crash is Thursday this week. I think half of towns got theirs out already, but. We gotta remember there's a holiday. It's a day late.
Well, this is the first time without a holiday.
Now, might also wanna remind people about mowing the grass out in the street.
I think it's gotten worse since we passed the ordinance.
Goodness, yes.
I believe Ken is gonna have a meeting with the police chief about some major grass that was blown out in the street and to find out if anything was done about it. It was, Kent brought me pictures and it, it was pretty heavy grass in the street.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know how they like, I don't know if the police department did anything about it or not, but Ken is gonna meet with the chief and see what the plan is. Do you happen to know?
I'm not familiar. We had a number of calls about grass in the street. We've responded to all of them that I'm aware of. And sometimes we weren't able to get to them super fast because we had calls and things going on. And then several of the calls we got called to, that was cleaned up by the time we got there. So. That was the very first, you know, she was more excited about it, so they were pulling right away.
Took some this morning.
Okay.
Show up, we'll be actively cleaning it up, so.
All right. Okay.
I'd love to see those.
Anybody have anything else they wanna bring up?
We've got a special meeting September 26th, 4 o'clock, council. Thursday, remember? I told everybody, I reminded, I sent an email out.
26th.
Thursday, the 26th, right?
Yep.
At 4 o'clock. RCAP will be here. Um, we're looking over rates, we're looking over utility fees, we're looking at long-term control projects, uh, construction projects, for our long-term control plan. Some of them are part of long-term control plan, but, uh, I'm gonna have council address all the issues and just focus on, on the projects, the costs and the rates and everything else. There are some grants out there, uh, that we can apply for, and I think we need to really look heavily into that. Uh, a lot of money that, uh, we can maybe get, so.
Did you talk to Bill about being here?
I, I, everybody was emailed, yeah.
Yeah, we, we plan on broadcasting this on TV because I think it will open your eyes as to what kind of expenses we have ahead of us for water and sewer issues and such things as that. And grants that may be available to help with some of those projects. And I just think there might be some community interest here, so I would like everybody to have a chance to listen to it and watch it.
Oh, since it made its rounds, those pictures were 24 hours after the fact, so 24 hours earlier was a lot worse than.
What was the address?
Corner of Smith, Columbus.
114.
Just along all the way down Columbus and partway around East Smith. But it. When it rains tomorrow night, people wonder whether.
Greens are plugged up.
That's kinda mild compared to a couple of what I saw.
Well, I said, that's 24 hours after the fact. So a lot of it got. Neither does it mean.
I'll make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
I have some back.
Take care, Mr. Wilson.
Okay. Baker?
Kent?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones? Richway?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.